Motion seconded, removing number five, all in favor of your hand. Motion carries number five, approve payments claims.
On page 10 of 21, the Hartz Veterans Museum, the payment we're paying them. Patricia, did we get a, a copy of their financials? I think our contract states we have to have financials from them.
They did not turn one in to the car. So I'm aware of.
Well, I, I'm gonna recommend that we don't pay this contingent until they give us the financials.
The judge did your office.
We didn't. So. Any other questions?
That's it.
I'll take a motion.
Uh, I make a motion to approve paying claims with the exception of Hartz Veterans Museum turning in their financials prior to paying.
I'll second that. Moving second down, all in favor raise your hand, motion carries. Number 16, discuss and take action on additional funding for inmate medical budget. Stop it.
Lord, sir. Oh, what this is, is when we did the medical corrections officer. I didn't realize that we would lose our second nurse spot. And we hired a second nurse and that spot is gone, of course. And so what we, what I'm trying to do is keep two nurses in the medical corrections officer. And of course, it's going to take an increase in money of about nine thousand. And we're willing to pay that through a commissary for this year and put it on next year. But basically what I'm asking is to put the
You're gonna cover the nine thousand till budget time?
Yes, sir.
And then we'll discuss the rest in budget?
Yes.
Put in from that on budget requests so far?
I haven't turned my name.
Okay.
It's a
So we create, did you create another position now or?
We, we had a, we had a uh, medical assistant.
Yeah.
That never got filled.
Okay.
So we, we use the medical corrections officer to fill that.
Mm-hmm.
And
Yeah, I remember when you come to court on it.
Being a rookie.
Yeah.
I couldn't, I didn't understand and get rid of the nurse.
I got you. So you're not a rookie no more, right?
Yeah, no.
Since you brought it up, I'm gonna say it.
Ms. Allen?
Yes, what I want to say though, um, if he's taking the part-time, uh, medical assistant to fund this, uh, position, it's way more. I think what you had visited with Amy about was using one of your jailer positions and supplemented it, but if you're using part-time, uh, money to go to full-time with a nine thousand dollar increase, it's way more than nine thousand.
That's, that's great. Uh, that position came from a jail position.
Okay.
And we, we called it a, a medical corrections officer because she was a corrections officer.
Uh, Amy's.
Amy online?
Amy. Yes, so the paperwork that I did for you Friday, John, was to put her back in the correctional officer position, funding nine thousand from commissary.
Yes, ma'am.
So you had an opening on the jail side?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so we can say authorize him to, um, so you're looking to fund your medical officer and your nurse through the end of the year. Am I right on that? Give me.
He just asked for nine thousand dollars be added to the correctional officer position to pay for the nurse side of it.
Okay, but I'm a little unclear, Patricia thinks it's
He had currently, uh, when he came to court, what Amy and I understood that he was asking for was because he had a vacant, uh, nurse position that he could not fill. He wanted to promote a jailer to this position that we've got now. Now he's fully staffed with his nurses, so that position technically goes away and the person in that position goes back to the jailer position.
All right.
What I understand that, uh, is being asked for is that in the long run, what he wants is two nurses and this medical assistant, uh, without having to give up a jail.
So do you have a, do you have a number in your head with, with filling it would be?
Um.
My thoughts is we make a motion to approve up to like thirty thousand dollars from budgeted funds to the
Yeah, for the remainder of the year or something.
For the remainder of the year.
We, you know, we can do it, but I'm just saying, uh,
Going forward.
If you're planning to do that in the budget, you're probably talking fifty thousand dollars to do that.
But we're good with the nine to get through this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Through the end of the year. Uh, using his jailer position, not the medical assistant. Medical assistant is used to pay overtime because the nurses always were overtime. So that money, rather than hiring an assistant, they elected to use that money to pay overtime to the nurses. So that money is still not a vacation.
Okay.
It's clear as mud.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking.
So if we think, if we think nine thousand
More confused than I was when we started.
We think nine thousand is enough to limp them through the end of the, to the
Yes, as long as he does fill his jailer position, yes.
Okay, and you're not filling your jailer position between now and the end of the year?
Yeah. We have two, two or three openings right now.
Okay.
So you're, yeah, you've got enough there to, to be okay to
Yeah, maybe you can fill all but one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So our motion could just be authorize the, the transfer of nine thousand dollars for inmate medical budget from budgeted funds.
Commissary.
Commissary funds. Do you want to limit it to commissary?
Yeah.
Okay.
Funded.
My motion.
He's a problem when he goes.
Okay, I got a motion.
Second.
Moving second, with all in favor raise your hand. Motion carries. Seventeen, discuss and take action on paying vacation and comp time for jail mechanic bonus time.
Okay, Mark Sawyer, jail mechanic, he's retiring on June 6th. And what I'm asking for is to be able to pay his accumulated time, which I believe is less than a hundred hours. Uh, to keep from having a break in mech- uh, mechanic at the jail.
Yeah, so you can go and fill the position.
Yes.
Mostly except, uh, paying the vacation and comp time.
Where are you gonna pull the money from, Patricia?
Probably contingency, but possibly within the budget, but probably contingency.
Okay, from the office, second.
Granny, do you have something on that?
I, I was asking the same thing.
Was it coming out of that? I just heard a, sorry to warn, I got a motion, a second all in favor raise your hand, motion carries. Eighteen, discuss and take action on salary increase for jail mechanic position from market salary to sixty.
Yes, sir. And as Sawyer's retiring, we already picked another mechanic and he's a thirty-year mechanic, has owned his shop for thirty years, uh, just closing it down because he's slowing down a little bit. But, uh, I would like to raise his salary from the, uh, median market to sixty, perhaps.
Which is the top of that position?
It's, it's not the top, sixty-three is the top.
What is the
What's the shot?
Sir.
What is the position paying?
Jail mechanic.
Now, what does it pay?
Fifty-one, zero, three, one.
Paying that commissary too?
No, sir.
Y'all are killing our salaries, buddy.
Yeah, that's a concern I have. This is, this is, to me, this is too big to just
Yeah, this, we're fixing to be in budget anyway, so this would kind of be a budget item, I would think, but, uh.
Well, and, and I'll, I'll be upfront with you, John, I don't mind you asking because everybody else has asked and
Right, yeah.
And we've given it to some, um, but, man, I don't know.
Nine thousand is, is big, um.
But we've already done it once, oh.
Not nine thousand.
Yeah, I don't know what the numbers were, what was the numbers, Rachel?
Or hers were three dollars an hour, they were six.
It was, it was fine.
Yeah, but, I'd say
How many of them was it?
But they was affected by not being able to fill the positions.
Yeah, well, I mean, this is basically
And it's, well, he has, he has it gone, yeah. So you don't know if you can fill it.
Yeah.
So I mean, the reality
I mean, we offer a lot more than just the salary. You know, our benefits are, I think, are kind of unmatched.
Yeah.
You know, between our vacation sick holiday, I think the best retirement plan in the county, um, I would prefer to at least post position at its market rate and see if you get applications. I mean, if you can, if we get applications for the current salary that are qualified, that, you know, might do the job, then we have to go with that. If you don't, then there's an argument, and we haven't, we haven't really tried, um, but I got troubles with that.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of where I'm at on it too, John, I mean, see if you can fill it at the position, uh, what it's at now. If you can't, then come back to us.
Yeah.
You know, because I mean, that's the same thing we had with like Rachel and everybody else. They couldn't fill their open positions, what we was paying. You know, so, but they had to suffer through a little timeframe there before we'd actually addressed it, but, uh, I would, I'm kind of on board with looking at it. If you can't fill it for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I could revisit with
Yeah, so that's just kind of where I stand on it anyway, I don't, you know.
I, I, I'm good with it, like I said, I think we're, like, like I said, I think we're nickel and dime in our salaries stated to do.
Well, I agree a hundred percent, yeah, I agree, yeah.
But if you can't fill it, then I say come back to court.
Can pass?
John, do, pass on it? Deny it? Rather just to pass it and roll?
And just pass on it.
That's
As a eighteen, nineteen, discuss take action on Ebon contract payment in the amount of four hundred and fifty dollars.
All right, the Ebons, um, they finally got together with Tyler, it's been over a year. Had several things with them. And it took a chance meeting at a conference for them to So anyway, they're ready to hook up with Tyler Technology and Ebon, and that's all we need is the keypad to signature pad and a thumb, thumb, uh, fingerprint pad.
I'm moved to accept and pay four hundred and fifty dollars for Ebon.
And that's, that's our only cost to
Yeah.
Second. Two seconds.
Move seconded, all in favor, raise your hand.
Hey, you three out of four, not too bad.
All right. Number twenty, discuss and take action on approval of Motorola radios and accessories as approved in fiscal year 2025 budget for the amount of twenty-four thousand one hundred.
Thank you. So a bunch of time we were pretty expecting right at twenty-six thousand to replace some, uh, of our handheld radios that we have. So I'm just asking if we can go ahead and purchase those right at twenty-four thousand, it's a little bit under budget, but it could be for three handheld radios, accessories, um, chargers that were kind of balance us out since we've opened one of those home stations, so help me that, give us some spare and some radios for our special events, things like that.
That's good, Drew.
Move ahead. I'll second.
Moving second down, all in favor raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-one, receive EMS medical director.
I have to go right here.
Morning, sir.
Morning, Bill.
Appreciate being here, I've been in the position for about two and a half years now, Dr. Christian. As a reminder, I am an emergency medicine physician, been practicing here in the area for about thirty-five years of involvement for about um, as you know, in Texas, uh, EMS is a delegated medical practice, basically means a direct practice under the physician. Most other states and union, uh, are scope of practice. The state sets the paramedic practice, physicians or advisors. Texas is a medical practice, since I've embraced that for the past thirty years. Uh, again, I run ground service, intercity, et cetera, and, uh, Walker County for the past two and a half years. My responsibilities are to train, recruit, review, uh, do quality assessment, uh, of all the medics, uh, for the county. So we, uh, have a pretty robust, uh, review of all of the medical care. But we have a, uh, quality reviewer that goes through charts and she pulls any issues, concerns we have either from our own review or from the hospital or through the public, and we go through and we call the medics and we pretty much bring them forward and we, we look at what we can do, what we've done well, what we can do better. Uh, my role also is a liaison to the community, with, uh, the medical facilities, uh, with the hospitals, not only here, HMH, but also the hospitals available to us, especially the trauma centers, the cardiac centers, the stroke centers, and to set the destinations based upon their capabilities, our capabilities, time response, distance, et cetera. We also look at utilization. We have folks in our community that their understanding or their access to medical care is nine-one-one. They don't really know what they need or where it is, how to get it, but they know how to call nine-one-one. And that usually makes us the, the primary contact. So we do go out and we respond to folks home and we talk to them, some of them have emergencies, some of them have questions, some of them, uh, need a ride. And, uh, we try to deal with all of those issues. We have, uh, some folks that call us quite a bit for social services. And we have engaged with, uh, social service opportunities in the area. We've looked at, uh, using nurse hotlines to get them just basic medical information. Reached out to mental health resources here in the county to try to get those folks what they need. I have met with the, the hospital leadership here to look at their capabilities, what their potential is, where they want to expand and develop, you know, the, the medical services within the county to try to make sure that, you know, we bring patients to them, uh, and, and work, work out any of their needs and be attentive to, to their growth and their development as well. Um, again, the destination is purely under the purview of the medical director according to the Texas State Medical Board, so looking at, uh, you know, who needs a trauma center, when they need a trauma center, and what we can do to get those patients stabilized. We have, uh, we are looking with several hospital systems to try to get, uh, blood or plasma to this county because any way you slice it, we've got about forty-five minutes to an hour or more sometimes to get people to specialty trauma surgical centers. Even calling their medical is going to take about twenty minutes, they have blood. But again, you know, we have to balance that off with the time and the distance, et cetera. We've looked at medications, we've looked at equipment, we're trying to do everything we can to service the folks for county, uh, to try to make their, uh, their emergency medical needs met. So, uh, just wanted to take the opportunity, Rachel had mentioned that, uh, hadn't been able or been invited to come and give you folks an address. I'd love to talk to you about anything that you need. I give you numbers, information if you ask me what you want. Um, and that's kind of what I'm here for.
Well, we appreciate you coming, you're wel- you're welcome to come back anytime.
Tell the name for me for the record, please.
K O B is in Victor A R, first name J A Y.
I think it's really good to be here, like Ronnie, an open invite. Um, and, uh, let us help you, you help us, you know, if we don't talk, we don't talk.
This is a very interesting county.
True.
I mean, looking at, you know, the resources we have, interaction with the prison system is unique. I am, I'm part of a, a national group of EMS physicians and state EMS physicians, and nobody has the challenges that we have with the prison system and responding, getting in and out, et cetera, and we have met with them and we have worked with them. Uh, we have
Good relationships with
Uh, Mr. Britt and the rest of that, uh, even their, their medical people, I know that they have T and B positions coming up now. I've met with several of them. Uh, I know that, uh, HMH is now contracting physicians, uh, through the, uh, Memorial Hermans system. Uh, again, talking to the director there about, you know, where, what's their direction, where they're going, what do they need, how can we, we service them? We don't have a broad variety of services here. Uh, I think anybody, we are fortunate enough to have relatively close advanced stroke care, advanced cardiac care, advanced trauma care, and with Texas Children's being in the woodlands, we've actually got, uh, the opportunity for some of the sick kids, uh, to, to get them there without having to call specialty transport or medical, et cetera. Uh, I think, uh, one of the questions was, I'm also the medical director for, for PHI for Texas. I have thirteen aircrafts here, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Kirkendall asked about, are we going to start calling the aircraft for everybody? I think we're, our flights are way down, I think we average like one and a half flights a month. Uh, and again, we've trained our folks up to a level that, uh, those services have. We've got some really now young, bright, uh, paramedics, uh, and EMTs. I, I run the training program at Lone Star at Montgomery and Cy Fair, so we are attracting those new medics up and into the systems, and it's, uh, it's great to have them. We are a bit challenged at, at attracting paramedics to the county, we have a lot of EMTs, and we have initiated a program to train EMTs up in their skills and abilities so we can kind of provide a higher level of care. The state of Texas and medical board allows me to provincial folks at their patch or above, meaning if you're a basic EMT and we think that you can give advanced medications, if I can train you and prove I can do it, we can, that's what we're trying to do to be responsive with the budget and the folks that we get here, so. Uh, anything you guys want, need to know, I'll happy to come to talk to you or provide you reports, et cetera. Questions right now?
Yeah, has your time, Rachel, with the, I guess the Ellis, before y'all was having a problem getting out of, right?
Oh, the Estelle.
Estelle.
Though, you know, they're the regional medical facility, so kind of all the prisons in this region in Walker County, but in the region, they'll send their sick patients to the Estelle unit, their regional medical facility, but they're limited on what they can do as well. So a lot of the transfers out that they need, if they can't get an ambulance there for scheduled transfer in a timely manner, depending on patient condition, they'll call us out. They call us for their acute emergencies as well, sometimes they don't necessarily have a physician on scene, um. But yeah, a, a lot of our issues with getting in and out of that unit is their staffing issues as well. So you're kind of waiting on the CO to come with their strengths and make sure they have all the paperwork and make sure they have the right amount of people to go with the patient, um, security, you know, sometimes that's two, three more depending on the level of the offender. Um, so we've worked pretty closely with those wardens trying to speed that up a bit, um. They've been pretty responsive, but they do have times when they have staffing issues or they sent out a bunch, they don't have the appropriate number of COs, so it takes a while to get those patients secured so we can get out, um, but they've been kind enough to give us like their call list, their warden list, so we have an issue, we can pick up the phone and call them, and as soon as we bring it up to the warden's attention, like, we're out of there, you know, they make magic happen, so.
Having the cell phone number of Warden Britt and the rest of the wardens to get our hero, that's been very, very helpful.
So y'all got a system that's working pretty decent for us now?
There, there's always a one-off where it's like, we'll have a critical patient and we're getting hemmed up, uh, but our crews can manage those patients and on the backend, we're trying to call who we can call to get them out, um, so that process has gotten better. There's still issues with it, I mean, TDC's big, you know, their big thing is security, our big thing is medical, so when we bump heads, they don't, they don't care about the medical and we don't care about the security, but it's, you know, trying to get everybody to move it. I've got enough pace, so we're, we both I've got enough pace that we both kind of win, but um, that's usually the biggest problem that we have with the prisons is that there's security protocols that they have to follow.
Well, you're our residents.
Want to give us a Riverside update while you're here?
Yes, so Riverside, we put them in service Friday, um, sent a crew out there. We've had several employees that have volunteered to go out there to get that station up and running. Um, it's fully stopped, all of that, but just to, you know, have people volunteer to go out there and make sure everything's running smoothly. They can make sure everything's going the way it should. Um, unfortunately, there was some cooling issues at the station on Saturday. So we did move them back to town because it was too hot. Um, that should hopefully be cleared up today and they'll be back out there. Um, but we're just going to have to move some people around to get that truck up and running. Um, might be a little bit short-staffed in town until we can move some of our paramedics up and fill a couple of our open positions. But all of our trucks can get into town really quickly, um, because they're primarily paced here in town, aside from down in Cleveland. Um, but just trying to get that truck staffed up so we can shore up the, you know, response times and things like that.
And we've initiated a squad response to where we have a paramedic independently can go and respond to different calls, calls that can't be reached quickly, you know, by a truck or the folks that call us a lot for low acuity reasons to go and ask them, what, what do they need today? Do they really need to go to the hospital? Do you really need an ambulance? Someone to go get your medication, things like that. Uh, so we are, uh, again, trying to be inventive and, and using what we have to, to do the task that we're given. Fortunately to have a great group of folks to, to do it. I think uh, we, we show well to the other state organizations. Uh, and hopefully that'll help bring in, you know, better folks, et cetera.
Have you, Rachel, have you, have you hired anybody for your assistant director yet?
So we're scheduling interviews for that on the eighteenth of June. So just kind of taking our time with it, making sure to fix some of the issues that we had, um, and everything, playing field before we bring in a new person to, you know, jump into.
Yeah, you got some applicants already.
We're up to like maybe close to ten.
Yeah, it's part of these equal interests.
That's good.
Which is, which is great. High codes want to come up here and, and work and.
Nice. Well, everybody I've ever talked to that y'all picked up has been happy. So the, what, what you do in the field is working.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Twenty-two, discuss and take action on water well repair for veteran in an amount of eighteen hundred and fifty dollars. I'm here.
And I don't see him online.
So this is some of his Seth fund money that we gave him to spend for veterans. And that's, I know, I know, she, that's my motion. Moving, seconded all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Twenty-three, discuss and take action to authorize the E Court data PSA and Tyler Tech to be paid from budgeted funds. That'll be my motion too. Moving, seconded all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-four, discuss and take action on award and payment of Vermont Mini Matrix Message Board P C M S five four eight Roden Bridge one in the amount of fifteen thousand two seventy-five to be paid from budgeted funds.
I think the good chance that you guys can look at and study over the weekend. Traffic signs and safety. One of the lowest we've received for this sign.
Yeah, so basically my, I've got an old signboard that we bought through an auction and it's more aggravating now than it was. So uh, I'm trading up, I guess, basically. Yeah, we found this place uh, there in Houston down there, so they're pretty close. And uh, we're very compatible, so. Any question? I'll make a motion, we uh, set number twenty-four going to uh, eagle traffic signs and safety not to exceed fifteen thousand two seventy-five.
Second, moving, seconded all in favor, raise your hand.
Fifteen thousand two seventy-five.
Twenty-five, discuss and take action on hiring a temporary employee and the purchasing department to be paid from available salaries and operation budget through September thirty, twenty twenty-five.
I just, everybody likes.
It's you, Miss Cheryl.
Waters to see um, part-time how, how it would work from now until the end of the year. Uh, with budget coming on and if it's going to uh, be beneficial, then uh, I'll go to budget and ask for the part-time to continue. Uh, I feel like the four hours a day, Monday and Friday uh, would be a good time spent in supporting the purchasing uh, staff that we have. Uh, doing uh, of course, uh, is there a, did I do the job description?
Yes, it's in there.
Perfect. Um, to help with the um, vehicle registrations, the insurance plans that we have and uh, fixed assets. And, and helping out, that would alleviate some of our time that the purchaser two, three, and myself can dedicate uh, to the more complicated uh, requests of the counties.
And you're not asking for no money to do this, basically?
Correct, I have it, I have it in my budget. According to uh, Amy, uh, as of the first of May, uh, I was needing uh, ninety-four hundred and she said you had plenty, more than enough to cover that. And of course I haven't filled it yet and this is the first of June. So uh, I'm going to have more uh, than enough to cover that for part-time.
I'll make a motion to approve, but that, you know, that doesn't mean you'll get it in budget.
Turn it, turn it into a budget, budget's due today. Okay, okay.
I'll give you a second.
Moving, seconded all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Twenty-six, discuss and take action on the war of slow station C two three six zero dash two five dash zero two three type B aggregate.
Wow. Yeah, that's what I said.
Ninety-seven dollars a ton delivered.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I appreciate you on Brian.
Yeah, what else you gonna do?
Yeah, yeah.
And I see y'all notice where pickup is.
Yeah. Did, the bottom pickup.
Did Jason bring y'all a bag of that rock?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, like, they're changing from heap, whatever this to this helo these stuff or whatever it is. I don't know how you say that.
It's still not great, but it's maybe better than what we've been getting.
Yeah, I'm making. I'm making the motion to approve, number twenty-six.
I'll give you a second and thank you, Miss Cheryl, I know you.
Yeah.
Be against the wall on this.
Yeah.
We have.
Yeah.
Um, all the people both, psych A and psych, right? Yeah, yeah.
Moving, seconded all in favor, raise your hand. Twenty-seven, discuss and take action repair to two thousand seven Mack truck Roden Bridge three in the amount of twenty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-three cents.
The engine blowed up.
Man.
And we gotta do a new one, so that's my motion to approve.
Is this Mr. Raiders going out now?
This, it's time to get out sometime.
You're in too deep, huh?
I'm in too deep.
You gotta drive it off.
I think Ronnie will give you a second.
I'll give you a second, let me help you.
Moving, seconded all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries.
Brotherly love.
Twenty-eight, discuss and take action on resolution twenty twenty-five dash six nine designate authorized signatures for the community with the Eleanor Watt Grant mitigation program for G L O state contract number twenty-four dash zero six five dash one four four dash F zero zero three and two four dash zero six five dash one four one dash E nine nine nine.
What does all that mean?
That means y'all are going to let me sign it when we get the money.
When, if.
Uh, Jordan is online, Johnny's in the, are you here for some of this, Johnny? Um, but the paperwork has came through, we have meeting set with G L O coming up.
Johnny, it's been so long since we started this, we wouldn't. We don't even know where we at anymore.
Jordan, you have any comments before we make a motion?
My only comment is about darn time, we're excited to get moving. We've got some questions for you at the kickoff meeting this Wednesday. I will be attending that virtually as well. My two-month-old says I'm not allowed to go to court anymore. Um, but otherwise, things are looking great, we're really excited. Johnny and I have been working on some of the background paperwork. Ally, I'm sure has been pounding you for signatures on all of those. Things are looking good and we're excited to get moving.
How much longer we got on this?
What was that?
How mu- what, what is the deadline on this grant?
Um, for the F zero zero three contract, which is the Harmon Creek Wood Farm and Riverside, um, we have uh, six twenty is the deadline to get our startup documents in. For the other contract, that's the E nine nine nine, which includes precincts for Forgotten Forest, Smith Road, Roberts Road and the emergency shelter, we have until July twentieth. However, we decided to just do them all at once and we're ready to submit them as soon as y'all approve these here resolutions. And we'll have it done this week, so we won't have to think about it anymore.
Very good.
And my motion is to approve number twenty-eight.
Uh, Decker.
Oh, you already did? Oh, I'll second you then. Moving, seconded all in favor, raise your hand. All right, I hear that one. Twenty-nine, discuss and take action on resolution twenty twenty-five dash seven zero regarding civil rights, which include the following policies. Citizen participation plan and grievance procedures, section three policy, excessive force policy, limited English proficiency, standards plan, section five oh four policy and grievance procedures, code of conduct policy and fair housing policy. My motion is to approve number twenty-nine. Moved and seconded all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Number thirty, discuss and take action on grant administration contract twenty dash zero six five dash one four four dash F zero zero three. Make a motion to approve it unless y'all have some questions.
I would, no, I'm, I'll, I'll, I'll second your motion, but I would like a, a copy of this contract. That's the one for my precincts, I guess. Random, it's my, my.
Do you not get it?
I don't think so, if I did, I didn't, I didn't.
We got a motion and a second, I'll.
I got all this, but I don't know the.
The details?
Yeah, project, I have all this, I don't have the project.
All right. All in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-one, discuss and take action on grant administration contract twenty-four dash zero six five dash one four one dash E nine nine nine. Motion's to approve. Moving, seconded all in favor, raise your hand, motion carries. Thirty-two, public hearing concerning plat number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero six replat allotts thirty-four and thirty-five block one of the Deer Forest subdivision, time is nine thirty-eight. Anyone here to speak upon that? Perfect. Andy?
I'm the replay.
Big lot out there.
Hey, don't block. Time is nine thirty-nine, public hearing is closed. Number thirty-three, discuss and take action on plat number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero six replat allotts thirty-four and thirty-five block one Deer Forest subdivision. Moving, approved. Moving, seconded all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries thirty-four, public hearing starting plat number twenty twenty-four dash zero one zero replat allotts three and four block one, section three. Time is nine thirty-nine, anyone here to speak upon that? Andy?
I'm trying to use that about Army Page, can you send the one over for?
I'll send it all, y'all, both of them.
Some more. I think it's a lot to make one little same drive to replat, so it's for Mr. Court.
Time is nine forty, public hearing's over. Thirty-five, discuss and take action plat number twenty twenty-four dash zero one zero replat allotts four, three and four block, block one, section three of Wildwood subdivision. Moving, approved. Moving, seconded all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries thirty-six, discuss and take action on Billy and Peggy Limble request for variance to section five of the Walker County subdivision regulations regarding many plats to be allowed to proceed under section two thirty-two dot zero one zero Texas government code to convey portions of plot lot via may meets and bounds description for track three Jerry Rich three point five five acre subdivision.
Andy, I think they'll continue to see that it's pretty good, they moved to one of the designed, right? Oh, right. Brayfield.
Sprayfield's going to be over the line soon.
No, no, it's, it's going to get moved back to the, on the, contained within the property.
Yes, it would have to be um, relocated so that it doesn't violate any of the, of the existing lot lines. But we have one party that won't participate, that owns the other half of lot in the plat. That's why they're requesting it be approved as a meets and bounds.
Yeah, we normally don't do this, but we got to on this situation because we can't get the other party to cooperate.
Yeah, we've done it a couple of times. Same reason, we did one in precinct two a while back.
It's not that we don't do them, it's just we normally don't.
Yeah.
So my motion is going to be to approve this contingent of farm, moving to spray fields for the sewer system in the correct place.
They're shaking now, yes.
Would y'all like to, Peggy, Billy, y'all have anything?
You don't move to approve it, they don't want to mess it up.
Did you make a motion?
I did.
Yeah, sometimes it'd be quiet, huh?
Moving, moving, seconded all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries.
You're welcome.
Thirty-seven, discuss and take action on the Wayward Development LLC request for contingent approval for development permit on Wayward Place, section three for initial section of Row Buck Lane prior to final approval plans.
So um, you're, you're requesting the developers here as well, I'll let them take over just as an introduction. What they're requesting is to go forward to props to be allowed to issue a permit, develop a permit on the existing plan sets, not the plan set that ultimately will be approved for the subdivision. But there's a section of the, of those, they would like to start construction on. So they're requesting that uh, that one of the roads be allowed to be started, the construction be, be allowed to issue development permits in that particular section. And then we'd be allowed to inspect it as if it weren't being installed uh, under the plan review for the subdivision. Uh, so they can get early start of construction, they understand that it's at their risk. If for some reason the, the final plan changes, it's different from what they're building, they'll have to address that issue. But they feel like the risk is worth it to get a, get started on the uh, on the road section. That's a, that's a basic, I'll let them uh, explain it a little more. Stephanie, are you?
Yes, yes. Yes, sir, I'm here.
I guess you guys.
Carrie, you got, hold on, Carrie, you got, well, go ahead.
You guys probably have more history with this project than we do.
Don't be ass.
You've been waiting on that one, ain't you?
Yeah, you guys are probably more uh, pain and suffering than we do, but, but, you know, in the course of last year, we've cleaned up a lot of the engineering side, you know, air. Didn't, every kind of brought back to life. Um, but I think, I think we're right there, there's still some, in the plat, the construction plans, there's just some, some small more language that needs to be cleaned up, we don't foresee the road changing and all the plans over the years, they've always been in the same spot. I think maybe Stephanie and Andy thought that we'd be close enough to ask if we could start construction with, in the hopes that in two weeks to maybe the next session or the session after that, then we'd have.
Okay, I don't, I don't have a problem with what we're trying to do here, we're trying to get a issue, permit issued to build the first road in section three. Um, Andy obviously said, you know, if. Um, Andy obviously said, you know, if y'all change the plans, then that's all on you or, you know, that's. We can't guarantee that, so I don't really have a problem with that, but while you're here, give us an update on section.
There's one, um with this. It's got, and um. When, when do we start on that, November, December?
Yeah.
Um, excavated out the. The channels that hadn't been touched in three or four years, so it's possibly pulled out four to five feet and still. Um, got them all brought back to. In its specs. We vegetated them. Um. Prepared uh, sorry, numerous sections of concrete. Um, installed the. Five to six hundred thousand dollars of drainage infrastructure that was kind of missed. Previously.
Or you, you wanted to replace some concrete?
Some certain sections of roads had some cracks that were on the list that were. That didn't meet standards.
I, I want you to elaborate a bit on that or, or let Stephanie elaborate on it, I know one of them culverts, uh one of them spots you done was because of a covert, right?
Um, I don't know specifically.
Didn't, didn't y'all have to do some, some, some work on some drainage through there?
There were.
That you had to, that you had to work on some of the, the road part, yeah.
Yeah, and this was prior to y'all getting it right, under Mr. Hassel.
We knew that good, every time that would. All this, we installed, there were two different. Kind of small creeks or drainage drainways that came into the north west corner of the property that were just kind of missed in. In the design. Coming down the streets and go across people's property and it was a huge mess. But we installed, uh it starts at a thirty-six, but majority is forty-eight inch, it's sixteen over. Almost twelve, thirteen hundred feet long, um so it was, it was quite a feat, but all that was installed back in.
We did that back, right, like that's been almost six months, so that was the.
Some of the concrete that you reformed, some of the concrete you reported was just due to.
The covert, turn up cross, street, street crossings with the drainage. We, well, there were two street crossings and then we replaced two other sections of the street.
It is, some of it was related to the grain, some of it.
Mr. Since we met in the office, um we were looking at the section three plans and the drainage study, so we've gone back and our engineer, our hydrologist engineer has. And revised the drainage study, so we've made several changes. We've given up one lot in section three to widen that channel and then we have the section one um amending plat that may come to the next session and that will. Show where it's been widened as well, um to do.
That's, that's that part on that creek.
Yes, sir.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, so um, you know, so since we've met, we've, you know, we've gone back it twice, I think, to the hydrology engineer and our engineer to make those changes and. Um, I think when we met about two or three weeks ago, we were very, very close to all the changes on the engineer plans and in the plat and just a handful of changes and. Just giving our team a little, another week or so to finish those and we can start with the construction, we've had a. Builder waiting on lots for several months now and the sooner we can get started on that street at our own risk and subject to inspection procedures, you know, is what our request is.
For the sake of clarity, what we're looking for is the court to allow us to issue a permit as if. Being built, obviously the plat will not be filed, not planning on selling any lots, they just want to get started with construction on the property under the current plan set. Their belief is that this section, the, the construction they want to do will not change between now and the final plan set, so they're, they're, they're willing to put themselves at risk to start now. And we would issue a permit, the big ask of court, because we can issue that permit, the big ask of court would be. They also, they also obviously would like us to use uh to do a pre-con meeting and then start up and, you know, engineering inspection. Relations to some of his regulations, because he's gonna start building, we're gonna obviously need to do some inspections so that. When he does get the final plan set, we're able to then provide feedback to.
It just, it's most section about fifteen hundred feet, I.
Yeah. That big pond back there in the back, um, how is your progress on the end?
The, the two, the, I guess they're bonded, the drainage channels.
That kind of. Section one and section three both share that.
Sure. We completed it um back in November to plans that were, we had at that time, um. As we were kind of digging through the last couple of months, um. Hydrology study didn't. Something wasn't matching in there, so we had to do a new hydrology study, they, we worked their calculations, now I need to take another five thousand yards out of it.
Yeah. Y'all hadn't filled any detention bonds in anywhere, have you? I just had to know, because somebody previous did. After inspection.
I, I know what you're talking about, no, this is new and we had to.
Okay, so y'all doing the, what you're supposed to be doing.
Yes.
Had to ask.
Section three, we have to modify the specs of that drainage.
That's why you had more detention.
So my question was, where are you uh? Or finished that five, who the rest? I'm not holding you down and I don't, I'm not asking, I'll just.
No, when we get, we get back to where they're building the roads, when they build the roads, start building more live rating, we can take it or, that will accommodate section three. In section three.
First make, approve number thirty-seven, any contingency?
I love that, what was at the rescue, yes. Move to approve thirty-seven, that's present.
Moving, second it all in favor, raise your hand.
Uh.
Motion carries.
Don't feel no detention in there.
Thirty-eight, discuss and take action on acceptance of ten percent subdivision maintenance bond for Homestead Hill subdivision. Application twenty twenty-two dash zero, three, five, bond number one, zero, one, four, nine, eight, five, one, zero.
So you big one, um, so this is a, the bond that was submitted, uh. Arm is ten percent of the original construction, um Stephanie's online, if you guys have any questions about these items as far as the engineering side goes. Uh. Uh, this is required, submitted prior to release of the original bond. And substantial completion being issued, so. That's why they're in this order. Are you good, are you good with the language? And I've already looked at it. Move to approve thirty-eight.
Second. Moving, second it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thirty-nine, discuss and take action on approval of substantial completion for regulated improvements for Homestead Hills subdivision.
Well, you have this and you also have a lot of. There's a few, there's a few items out there, Stephanie talked to that, uh there's a few items out there that. On price list, but they're really missing things, minor items, and so for. Look at those and watch those during this. During the, the ten percent uh period. This other bond stays in place. Make sure, I think that the developers happy to do that.
I think we talked about setting a meeting up in six months so that if there. Is something you have last, no last minute, let's do it on a twelve month deal.
Right.
Y'all good with that?
Stephanie, do you have anything to add to that?
No, sir, I think six months would be a good, good time to follow up on some of the, the items listed in the letter.
So. No objection to the substantial completion, just with, with the note of that, that letter, that there are some things that need to be done.
I don't have the letter, Andy.
Stephanie. It's in backgrounds.
Yeah. Yes, that's it.
Okay, so move up. Bonds being addressed in the letter from bioengineering dated May twenty-eight, twenty-five.
Second.
Moving, second it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Forty, discuss and take action on release of subdivision bond, bond number one, zero, one, two, five, three, five, three, eight for Homestead Hill subdivision.
This is a releasing. Was putting up for the construction. And for approval.
Second.
Is that it? Moving, second it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. Forty-one. They. Discuss and take action on certification of completion for replata lots fifteen D and fifteen E of Foxwood. Addition, section two, E, Borset, Lee. A thirty-three.
Stephanie, you want to speak to this, this item? Guys have a. Kind of a light breaker, but you guys sure.
Yeah.
Again, you know, related to this. It's like, it's like this.
Yeah.
There you go. Look it.
That's it.
You need to. I got it, my little thing, flipping on me, I looked at it this morning.
But so just to summarize, we received updated plans, um I think on May twenty-first is when we received those updated plans. Um, and also certifications from the engineer, the engineer certified, the engineer had a. An RPLS, um go out to the field, survey the detention basin and then the plans appear to be. Prepared based on that survey that was in the field and they analyzed the pond based on what was actually built. Um, and they show that the ponds, both ponds have adequate capacity for that, um, the proposed development. And so the uh engineer for the developer certified the completion based on those ads built. Surveys that were provided. Uh, we made a field visit last week and I have some, a couple photos attached, more than a couple, um attached to, are included in the letter. You know, primary concern would be. Just that vegetation's not. Established across the entire detention basin, um there's some. Some areas where you can see that, that it's um a little bit sparse, but other than that, no. Significant concerns. If it's constructed.
For, for the condition that was that. Plans. Or you could, we could issue development permits on the lots, so the plots filed, plans were approved, now they submitted replacement plans, uh. Certification has been received. By the Stephanie noted in, in that letter or what's remained, so. The court rather not to approve, approve it so that we can start issuing permits.
Yeah, and I've been by it, it's, the structures that are out there, they're handling the water, just, they're doing fine, not you under any, I see Brad's back there in the back and he lives. Right around the corner from it, so they have issues or I have issues, he's a phone call away, I make the motion to approve agenda forty-one.
Second. Moving, second it all in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries. No executive session, public comments. Questions from media. Michigan's court. We're gonna meet tomorrow for the road. We're gonna meet at the courthouse and then we'll exit off this door at eight thirty, get in the van. And we posted, that's one. Van's leaving at eight thirty, the only time you're late, you follow behind.